I don't have curtains on those windows, so too bad.
We're not going to worry about Karen for right now. We're just gonna deal with that next time.
Well, you still look great, so you're all good.
Can we see how to get the crown again for next time? No, okay.
I wanted the crown.
I thought that's pretty cool. At least it'll keep people awake. Even gets adjusted.
That's very funny. Are there also little horns for that?
I might bring out the horns later.
Are we all ready, Alex?
Yes.
Yes, give me one second. I'm just waiting for the YouTube stream to load up and then we will be good to go. Okay, I believe we are good to go.
I don't see Mikey, I'm sorry. See here?
I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, should I start?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'd like to call to order the Malibu City Council regular meeting of April 27th, 2020. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate this Zoom meeting process. Council members and staff are participating from remote locations and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions on the screen under the sign up to speak tab. Once the item is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed. So please make sure you hit malibu city.org/virtualmeeting early to download the Zoom application and sign up to speak. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Council members, if you have comments to make during this meeting, please raise your hand and I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mellon?
Here.
Councilmember Peak?
Here.
Councilmember Wagner?
Here.
Mayor Proton Pearson?
Here.
Mayor Farah?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Heather. May I please have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on April 24th, 2020.
Thank you. Okay, we are on item 1A.
Mayor, did you want to have an approval of the agenda?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Councilmembers, may I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Uh, councilmember Wagner?
Here.
And I'm sorry, who seconded?
I did.
Uh, councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Mellon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Farah?
Yes.
Motion.
Thank you. Okay. We will now have a staff update on COVID-19.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I hope everybody is continuing to stay well. I wanted to give you a brief update on what the city staff has been going, what have been doing since we've been under the stay at home order and since we talked at the last council meeting. The majority of city staff are working from home. We've been able to set up many, many of our employees remotely, so they are able to do their regular job remotely. We're obviously all using Zoom and conferencing and doing a lot of telephone calls to stay connected. Those employees whose job duties do not allow them to work easily from home are on leave using their accruals. We do have some employees that have childcare responsibilities, and there is help from the federal government similar to the Family Medical Leave Act that's available to those employees so that they can continue to receive their full pay. You'll recall in March, when the stay at home order was first issued, we authorized a temporary 5% pay increase to essential employees. I want to make sure that everybody is aware that that has ended. We instituted that because we thought it was going to be a very short time. We want to recognize those employees who were being required to work in the emergency operations center. But at that time in March, we didn't know how long that was going to go on. So we have ended that after a few weeks, and so everybody is receiving their normal pay amount. I know there were some concerns from the community about that, so I wanted to make that clear that that is not what is happening anymore. And that, you know, as I said, we're trying to keep everybody doing their regular job duties as much as possible. Effective today, we're going to start a new messaging protocol. We had heard some compliments and some complaints about the messaging that had gone out over the weekend. We want to be mindful that we don't overburden people receiving the messaging from the city. And since it seems that there's less of a need for as much of what we were sending out twice a day, that we now will go to a once a day protocol in the afternoon about 2:00. We will not be using the Nixle application anymore for the messaging, so residents will only get it if they've signed up for e-notification through the website and they'll get that depending on how they've selected that option either as email or text. And then we'll use the Everbridge, which is the reverse 911's system for more emergent issues and we also the WIA notification, which goes out to cell phones. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that we were going to scale back some of our messaging so that we don't overburden anybody. Over the last three weeks, we did 11 days of testing at City Hall, which was a drive-through testing site doing nasal swabs. That was a partnership with Core and Malibu Medical. So we were able to test nearly 3,000 people. To date, they have found 48 positives out of those 3,000 people, which is a very low rate. Some testing sites are seeing as high as 20% positives. So we were glad to see that. I do want to note that not all of those positives were Malibu residents. So if anybody's checking, the LA County Public Health Department notices that state by city Malibu, I believe, had 28 as of yesterday. So the numbers that I'm reporting from our testing site are not all Malibu residents. But many of those positives that we got were from people who were asymptomatic. So it's really great that we were able to catch that and hopefully stop some spread from those folks who didn't even know they were sick. I wanted to give a big thank you to our CERT team. They have provided over 400 hours of volunteer service to us since the stay at home orders were, went into effect. They've been helping at the testing site, doing traffic control and doing all different sort of things out in the community for us. So a big thank you to that and also to our volunteers on patrol who continue to patrol the city during this time. And I want to make sure that everybody has taken a chance to visit our virtual recreation center. They update it regularly. There is new information every Monday. And for those of you who'd like to go directly to that, that's malibu city.org/virtualrec. And that concludes my update on the COVID-19 unless there's any questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Riva. Any questions? Okay, we will move on. Do we have any commission or committee updates?
Mayor Farah, did you want to take public comment for items not on the agenda first?
Oh, excuse me, 2A. Yes, absolutely. Do we have speaker slips or do we have speakers for?
Yes, we have five speakers. I'm going to read all of their names and then we'll call them to speak one by one. First, we have Jonathan Kay, then Barry Heldman, then Kay Hill, then William Winneker and Hamish Patterson. So first is Jonathan Kay. Jonathan Kay? It seems Jonathan is not here, so we'll move on to Barry Heldman. Barry? Do we have Kay Hill or Craig Hill?
Here, do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Craig.
Okay, great. Hi, everybody. I hope you're all taking care, doing well. I'm hearing an echo now, but I have a tip especially for anyone feeling anxious. When you go out, mark it on your calendar and note any remarkable contacts. That way, even if the days start to blur into each other, you'll know how long it's been. The incubation period varies from about three to 14 days. So after, but there's a big peak around five to seven days. So after about a week, you can start to feel safe, or if you have symptoms, you can trace it back to the exposure. Tracking and tracing are going to be a bigger deal as we go forward, whether it's you doing it or the government through, for example, a phone tracking app, as is now being done already in Australia. So we've got to get with the program. To reach herd immunity, we need to get to 60 or 70% with antibodies. And so far in the US, it looks like we're at about 0.3% of the population. So we're about 1/200 of the way. And when you think of that curve that everybody's talking about flattening, the drawing is often misleading because it, the flattened part actually extends much further out. And it extends through November and we're, this is going to be with us in the November election, one way or the other. And I just heard today that for universal mail-in balloting to occur federally across the country, Congress needs to act within two weeks because of all the lead time. They need, various localities need to get, get on top of that. So again, I'll implore you, council, and anybody listening, watching out there. If you have influential friends, celebrities or millionaires or politicians, lean on them, get to Congress, get them to act to open up universal balloting, mail-in balloting, because that's going to be a big deal. And at the rate we're going, if we don't get on top of this now, it's going to be a major mess in November. All right, thank you.
Next, we have William Winneker.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, Mayor, and also council members, Riva, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I know that a couple of you, that you guys may have received a couple of emails from me lately, and I hope that, I, I hope that even though I am frustrated that I, that the tone of my emails is intended to be civil, so I hope they're taken that way. And I certainly know that all of you guys are doing an amazing job through what are extraordinary times. So on that note of frustration, we are all changing our lifestyles, our activities. We're restricting movements, restricting seeing loved ones, dealing with elderly that we can't see or infirm people that we can't get to. So there's a great amount of frustration that I feel when I see what looks like a very uneven enforcement. I'm referring specifically to the number of transients who now seem to be not only exploding in numbers within the civic center, but almost seem to be the majority of people that I see out who don't seem to be observing any of the same guidelines that we all are trying to do for everybody's safety. So I, you know, as I stated in my emails, not only do I feel like we, or many entities often use Martin v. Boise as kind of like the end-all, be-all, oh, well, that just made it impossible to enforce any behavior patterns when people are on public property. But I just still can't see how that's the case with tents, a very large one that's now. I mean, you guys, you guys drive the same roads I do, so the huge tent, belongings everywhere, trash everywhere. Today I drove by, there was a guy hanging, I don't know, it was like his laundry out, almost like on, on clotheslines that he had constructed between a few trees. And I mean, I, look, I understand that we, there are certain things that are unusual because of COVID, but this is an issue that we, as a city, have been dealing with prior to the pandemic. I strongly support the efforts of some of the, of some of you on the council to getting some form of a shelter so that we have more enforcement rights. I know, not, not to single out you, Councilmember Pearson, because I believe others are also working with you, but certainly you and I have spoken about that. I think that's an excellent plan and I'm, and I know that a lot of the communities behind that. On that note, I would like to strongly suggest that you, as the city council, consider.
William, your time is over.
Well, that's a bummer. I'll, I'll shoot more emails to you guys, but thank you for the opportunity and stay safe and God bless.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Hamish Patterson.
Good evening, council. How's everybody doing? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, awesome. Hey, I just, again, I wanted to compliment everybody on the work they've been doing the last six weeks and charted through uncharted territory, one second now. But I, I'm beginning to get concerned. I, every one of you took an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution. And at some point, we need to pivot back to that. I get we had an emergency, a bunch of unknown, but now we're beginning to look at a pretty dire situation. And this sort of thought that we can just print fake money into infinitesimal numbers and keep everybody at home seems to be folly. And if we listen to the previous two speakers, how are we ever going to get herd immunity if nobody's moving around? And secondly, if this continues to go on and all these people are out of work and these businesses close, where do we think the homeless are going to end up? Where do we think all these displaced people are going to home, are going to end up? And I suggest that if we don't begin to look at this differently, we are going to see a spike in crime in Malibu. We're going to see a rise in homelessness in Malibu, and we're going to begin to see civil unrest. And I know it's not up to you to do unleash this thing, but I think as a city council, you need to address your constitutional duties and they're very clearly written. And one of the things I would like the city to do is inform Gavin Newsom that shutting down permitted of protests in Sacramento is unconstitutional. People not being able to pray together is unconstitutional. And people not being able to pursue their businesses is taking, is a taking. And it's not due process. And I get that we've had an emergency, but the numbers are coming down. And if we do want to get herd immunity, we really do need to think about opening the thing up. And I don't mean the beaches, keep the beaches closed, but, but I'm seeing people struggling. And I, look, I'm in Malibu, I'm comfy, I've got food, I've got money in the bank, I've got a backyard. But we live on a giant city and they don't have that same privilege. And those people are running out of food, they're running out of money, and they have a right to pursue their liberty to feed themselves, employ themselves, and keep the economy going. And, and we're, I think we're moving in a really dangerous direction. And for all of us, we live on an island, but we're on the edge of a giant sea of humanity. And those people are going to come here if they don't get their needs met eventually. And I, I, I just ask you to look into your constitutional duties and begin to pivot towards that and away from the, the fear porn that is being propagated throughout our society. Thank you for your time and I appreciate all of you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment for items not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Kelsey. All right, we are moving on to item 2B. Do we have any commission or committee updates?
I don't believe so, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Riva, do you have a city manager update?
I do, thank you very much. Mr. Winneker, thank you for your comments. I have received your emails and I will contact you directly to discuss some of the issues that you brought up. In other things that we've been working on, I took kind of a few updates for everybody. You may, if you've driven through town, notice that we are working on Legacy Park. The benches were refinished throughout the park and the rehabilitation project is also going on even through the stay-at-home order. Obviously, all of our park maintenance employees and contractors are still working to maintain the park and continue that project. The temporary skate park is moving along well. The surfacing of the asphalt is on schedule and you can actually see progress if you get out there. So that's exciting and the staff has been speaking with the company that will be building the equipment. And what they'll be doing is actually building the equipment off-site and then bringing it on-site to install. So that project is moving along. As I had mentioned, or as we discussed at the last council meeting, there will be a delay to the expected opening of that due to the stay-at-home order, but we are still pushing it as fast as we can and hopefully we'll be able to make up some time on that. The work out at Charmley Park, which is repairing the trails and getting it ready to open, which was part of the council's direction last year, has continued. It looks like we'll be able to get some volunteer help to do the trail maintenance, which is great because it won't cost us anything. So as soon as we're able to work out all the details of that, that work will start to get the trails back up and running, hopefully when everything opens up. We're still moving forward with the sirens project that we had authorized earlier this year and working on the study for that. So staff is participating with the consultants to move that along. In terms of rebuilds, we have issued 92 building permits. Still at the number two for completed homes, but we have about six or seven that are nearing completion. So we're hoping that we'll be able to wrap those up soon and issue a certificate of occupancy for those. We have 18 new rebuild projects that have been entered and accepted by planning. And we also permitted one multifamily building with 12 units of apartments to get started. Since the stay-at-home order was issued, the Building and Safety Department has issued 38 plan checks, 244 permits other than rebuild permits, and conducted over 690 inspections for projects that are being built right now. We also permitted the La Paz project and they have started their demolition and they are in compliance with everything that they've been asked to do. There has been quite a bit of activity on Civic Center Way due to not only the La Paz project, but also the Santa Monica College Facility project that they've been working in the right-of-way in the road. So there are intermittent closures and cones and whatnot along that area, which is, is causing a bit of delay if you're going through there. Southern California Edison is working on a pole replacement project in Malibu Canyon. They'll be replacing 38 poles, two of which are in the city. So we have gotten that hopefully notice, notification out to people to expect that. We've also taken advantage of this unusual time to make sure that we're being as tech savvy as we can as we operate City Hall. So we are now able to accept electronic payments for permits and different fees that we hadn't, normally you would have had to come into City Hall to do. So that is functioning well and a big shout out to our staff who are able to work really hard to get that working. We're also able to do digital stamping of building plans and permits. So that's a, a big step up for us and I'm glad that we're able to be more efficient. I have been working with the county on a safe parking program and looking at ways to get a shelter for homeless individuals at the old courthouse next to the library and so continue to meet with the county and all the different departments to work through all the different things that need to happen for that following in the direction of what the council asked us to do. And then Wednesday, this Wednesday, April 29th, at 6:00, we have our first unveiling of next year's budget. So if people want to make note and participate in that and they can hear what's happening. The good news is that we're almost to a balanced budget. So I'm looking forward to being able to share that information with the city and the council. Certainly some belt tightening went on. But I think for this very moment in time, we can breathe a little bit and hopefully that means that the stay-at-home orders will be lifted. And then if the council would like me to address any of the other things that the speakers mentioned about the stay-at-home orders and, and what will happen, I'm more than happy to go into that. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Riva. I have one question. Do we have any update on the county stay-at-home order being lifted?
At this time, there hasn't been any change. I know in the press conference today, they talked about asking different departments within the county to come up with concrete plans that can help towards the lifting of the order. What I've seen in other areas is it's a gradual turning back to normal. It's not going to be a light switch and everything goes back. So I think that the county, what they're trying to do is find different ways to do this in, in steps. Though I did note in the news earlier today that all of the counties in the Bay Area extended their stay-at-home order to the end of May. So I don't know what bearing that has on what the county of Los Angeles will do. But as you all know, we do take our orders in terms of the stay-at-home order and the beach closer, closures and the parks and trails from the county and the county health department. So we are following what they are asking everybody to do. And I know it is really, really difficult for everybody and I really am very grateful to everybody who did stay out of Malibu and off of our beaches this weekend because I think it was noted and really did help. So I don't have any other information, but certainly as soon as we get it, we'll share it with everybody.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to.
Karen, I think Jefferson has a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Karen. Just wanted to make a council member, council member comment. Can you hear me, Karen?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Okay, so I have driven down Civic Center quite often and thank you, Bill Winneker. I did see that individual today and mildly addressed it. He was trying to sell product. Fee, for Hamish, the term you're looking for is fiat, fiat money, F-I-A-T. Google that and you'll get the same definition about what your prognosis and your predictions are for the printing of money. Also, I'd like to add quickly that I had a one-hour Zoom conference with Bill Gash, president of Pepperdine University, and hopefully the establishing of a ombudsman's office for the city of Malibu along with Trevor, city attorney, several of the professors at the university, as well as students that would participate in the program if it ever is adopted. So very exciting, that one-hour meeting would really be something for the city in the future. And I'm glad to see that we still have some traction with Pepperdine and I look forward to collaborating with them and getting the university on board with the city and the city on board with the university. I think we need to use the assets that are up there on the hill for the benefit of the community and I think that's what Jim Ga, Jim Gash was reaching out about. Thank you, Karen.
Okay, thank you, Jefferson. All right, we will move on to council member reports. Rick, would you like to start?
Sure. First of all, just like to say thank you very much to all of the CERT members and the VOP personnel who are out there, especially the CERT team doing all the support for the incredibly efficient testing that went on at City Hall. Very impressive, really impressive organization and it's nice to see people out there giving their time for the community during this hour of need for everybody. Like to also say thank you very much to the city manager for doing an interesting, a good, great job in this interesting time. And I know that you've spent quite a bit of time working on the budget and we'll deal with that on Wednesday, but it's not an easy task to deal with all of this, all of these challenges. And I think that the staff is doing a wonderful job in very evolving and interesting time that we're living in. I want to make a few comments about the speakers. Mr. Winneker, city manager will speak to you, but we hear you and I agree with you. And I think that we, you know, there's a long-term problem and it's been going on for a long time, but don't stop bringing it up. And we won't stop our efforts to try and fix that long-term problem. It's not just here, it's all over California, but it's a big one, the biggest one maybe. And Hamish and Craig, you pretty much got the two ends of the spectrum there. I kind of. I kind of, I'm more inclined to lean toward the Hamish constitutional end of the spectrum. And you can feel it, you know, it's happening. That struggle is going on nationally, at state level, at the county level, and you see everybody going out to the beaches. So human nature is sort of straining at the bridle to get back to normal. I think everyone's feeling that. And I'm very impressed with how everybody has been dealing with it in Malibu. Everyone's taking it very seriously, and it'll be a transition. And I think that it'll be hopefully sooner than we think. We've sort of accomplished the mission on national scale of flattening the curve in it, and we've learned a lot along the way. But thank you very much for your comments. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Skylar, would you like to go?
Thank you, Karen. I can pretty much second most of what Rick said, although I do differ a little bit at the end. I think one, one thing that I do really appreciate is obviously all of our staff and first responders working throughout the community around the clock, but also our community and people being respectful, for the most part, of the orders that are in place and taking this seriously. It's, you know, I walked into the store the other day, and I was like, dang, I gotta put my mask on again. And same thing for me when I'm at work, you know, wearing your mask all day is a little different than normal. But everyone seems to be doing it, obeying it, and I just appreciate everybody being respectful of that. And I do really hope that we can get everything back to normal as soon as possible. So thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Skylar. Jefferson?
Thank you. Once again, I just wanted to reach out to the community and remind them that we're still trying to work this ombudsman's office off, office to bring it to fruition. And I believe with the aid of the city and the staff, it won't cost the city anything. There's no cost. It's a run-neutral kind of operation. The benefits will be for the city that we won't have to use a higher-paid staff time. We can use volunteer efforts from the university to achieve small issues that we can resolve before they go to court, before they go to the attorneys. I had mentioned this to Christie some time ago, and she supported the idea. And it's been batted around a lot, and hopefully we'll get a chance to review this and, and take it on board. As far as the homeless issues that Rick and Skylar have mentioned and ongoing, there is a group out in Malibu that's looking to work with Carol Moss and the various CART people on establishing a FOB, what we call a Forward Operating Base, or some temporary, not elaborate housing down at Topanga on State Park property with the county authorities. I reached out to Tessa Sharnovsky. We've played phone tag on it. But I think that might be a way for the 90265ers to establish some kind of more amenable meeting place for the homeless. Like to remind people that the Garcia versus City of Los Angeles was a ruling that just came out last week on the amount of homeless matter that can be moved and not moved with the authority of the homeless person. So people should review Garcia versus Los Angeles. Thank you, Karen.
Okay, thank you, Jefferson. Mikey?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks to all our speakers. Bill, you and I have talked. I'm just glad to add to what Riva said, that we're still working on the homeless situation even during the pandemic. And she met with county officials on it, which, so we're moving forward. She's had some other meetings too. Personally, I've pretty much just been at home. So thank you, Riva, for your efforts on that. Hamish, I hear you. I think it's difficult, everyone. Thanks, everyone, for staying safer at home. This is, this is hard. This has been hard. It still is hard, and it looks like it's been hard for a while longer. And I want to acknowledge this quarantine, safer at home, it's, it's not perfect. It's got its parts that work better than other parts, and it's hard on the weekends, in particular when a lot of people come to town. So I know that it's hard, and, and I want to add that just so everyone understands the communication that we seem to get at council is very much on two different sides. There's some people just saying, hey, thanks for what you're doing in the middle. But it's generally, hey, we've got to lock things down more because it's dangerous, or we've got to open things up because, you know, that's the Constitution, for example. Maybe not that word being used, but we use Hamish's word. So we're getting a lot of feedback, both ways, and it just shows how difficult this situation is. For myself, after listening to the county health department's press conference on Friday afternoon, with Riva's help, I got ahold of Mayor Garcetti's office and asked to be put on the group planning the rollout and reopening society as a representative of the beach cities. So trying to do whatever I can to help us move forward in a safe, legal, and sane manner. And not going to back down on that. So I will keep up on that. A lot of communication, also about the communication coming out from the city. Some people, quite a few people still looking for information and having trouble getting what they want. Some people going, why are you, you're putting out too much information? I would just raise my hand and say, if there's too much going out, then just blame me because the one thing I know I have stressed since I've been on council is not having a lack of communication during an emergency. So as Riva said, we're going to back down on some things now. And I also want to point out, though, it depends on the way you're signed up, you can kind of get redundant information, as Riva said. So maybe we can all check through that. I know I get a lot of, a lot of different redundant texts, et cetera. And I don't think that some people realize that part of what happened this weekend was a "we" message, which means it automatically went to everybody in town on a cell phone, not just people that signed up. So there was another message there, but that was intended for people visiting Malibu. So anyhow, yes, I, I will sign up for too much communication instead of too little, but yes, it has been a lot. Also, notice on the short amount of time on the agenda, there's very good reasons for that. Things are changing sometimes hourly. So staff is doing their best to get an agenda together while recognizing that things are changing very, very rapidly. And it's not an easy situation, particularly with everybody working off-site. Also, I I share some people's concerns. It's, it just seems to take a twist right now and be really awkward on, on some of the Airbnbs that have been a problem. Right now, when things are pretty much closed down, I know there's definitely some people very fearful of people renting out party houses and things like that. That does concern me. If you see something that's unsafe, the best option can be to call the sheriff. You certainly can call our, our hotline on that as well. It is a difficult situation. And honestly, one of the things that concerned me with the vote we had on STRs a number of months ago is that we did not leave any real protections right now. And I think what we're seeing, the result of that at the moment, so I really hope we can get through this. A little bit related, the mayor, Karen, and I, Riva, and some staff members had a meeting with the California Coastal Commission last week. Karen and I had asked for a meeting to try and start to form relationships as we're newer elected with the Coastal Commission. And Bonnie and Riva put together a great agenda where we went through kind of all the hot topic, topic issues that we are discussing at the moment. I, I would have to say it was a great first meeting. And we were supposed to meet in person when we started making this meeting, but the world changed. And as you know, the chairman of the Coastal Commission, you might know, was actually near death at the time from the COVID. So we did at least get a virtual meeting, a phone meeting, and we hope to follow up with the in-person meeting as soon as we can because we recognize for the city of Malibu, the strong relationship with the Coastal Commission is very, very important. Hats off to the testing from the city, too. I've gotten so many comments from people out of town, our local neighbors, Topanga, in particular, Agora, that came and, and took part of that. I was not feeling well late last week, and I went down and got tested on Friday. And I was very impressed with the whole setup and how it was. Honestly, I have hardly left home at all for so long. I can't remember. It's Groundhog Day every day in my house. So a huge thanks to city staff for all their hard work in this really unprecedented, difficult time. CERT doing an amazing job. The VOPs, amazing job. The number of tickets I heard they're writing would, would absolutely stagger people who still just see hordes of people concerning and parked and different things. But the VOPs are really, really working hard. Arson Watch was activated. Good to see some of my fellow Arson Watch people out there. And of course, the sheriffs have been very communicative. Our new lieutenant, Jim Braden, has been, been great and a really good communicator. And as are our local representatives, too. I've been on multiple Zooms, chats, calls with Henry Stern, Ted Liu, Richard Bloom. So they're really, really stepping up and working hard, too. And that's my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mikey. Okay, um, yeah, I want to thank the speakers. I'm sorry about the two speakers who signed up and were not able to be found. Not sure why that happened. But I, I would like to address the, what I believe is going to be a phased, gradual incremental reopening. What I don't think anybody wants to see is a negation of all the progress that's been made to date by staying the course and by doing whatever we want to call it socially or physically distancing and all the other measures that people have been taking. So, you know, I, personally, I feel the trade-off is too great. I understand it's economic devastation, and I understand everybody wants to get outside. And as we all know, as soon as the weather gets good, everybody wants to go to the beach, all of our residents and a lot of people who drive a long way to get here. We, I, we will continue to mirror the county orders. And in my opinion, they've been making good decisions so far, so I don't have a problem with that. Mr. Winneker, I know what you're talking about. I've read every email you've written. You know, there are challenges with having the library closed, with having the library parking lot closed, I mean, Legacy Park. So I do want to thank, as was said earlier, the whole group from CART. I'd like to thank particularly Alex Gettinger and the People Concern, our contracted operator for homelessness. It's tough. I mean, I think some people have left, you know, the RVs have all gone away because the parking's been temporarily locked off. But we, you know, we all have to recognize that homeless didn't cease to exist. Some of them have moved, and some are very much, very visible and right in the Civic Center area. So we have to continue to work on those challenges. For myself, I too want to thank Riva, our city manager, and all the staff for just staying this course and working in this challenging time. Saturday was tough because the weather was great, and everybody wanted to come to the beach. We all wanted to go to the beach. So I thank the sheriff. I thank the VIP, VOPs, the lifeguards, everybody who was involved in trying to keep that situation. As far as our testing at City Hall, I really want to thank Sean Penn again and his organization, Community Organized Relief Effort, and Dr. Lisa Benya and her staff at Malibu Medical. And all of our CERT volunteers have really done an amazing job. And as we heard, approximately 3,000 people have been tested. And it's, it's really been, I think, unique. I, I don't know of another city as small as ours that's been able to do that. And it's, it's been an important step in this whole process. I want to thank Jane Albrecht and the Malibu Democratic Club for organizing something recently called a Night In with Ted Liu. There was a discussion with, I think it must have been 50 people in on that call, with chairs of the other local Democratic Party Clubs and the LA County Democratic Party Chair. Ben Allen was in on that call. There was just a lot of discussion on current issues, upcoming concerns, and a really good discussion. I attended the COG virtual meeting, and I want to thank Henry Stern for his input on that. And all of our COG cities are going through challenges now. I will say, I have a feeling that financially, we are coming out in a better position than even some of our other COG cities, which all have a similar demographic. So our financial conservation is paying off. And I keep reminding myself how thankful I am that we got the Edison settlement at the timing that we did and in the amount that we did. And as Mikey said, we had a meeting that was changed from in-person to virtual, and it got delayed by, I don't know, a month or something. But we did meet with many members of the Coastal Commission or the Coastal Commission staff, Executive Director Jack Ainsworth, and our District Director Steve Hudson, and several others there. They're head of enforcement for this area about some very important issues, some extremely local. So we're trying to move ahead on, on all the things that have been discussed already. So that's it for my report, and I think it's time to move on. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. And.
Did anybody pull anything from consent?
Nothing has been pulled by the public.
May I make a motion to remove the consent calendar?
Can I just confirm, counsel? Does anyone have anything to pull? Okay, we have a motion from Skylar. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Heather? Do we do a roll call?
Yes.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullin?
Yep.
Councilmember Wacker?
Yes.
Mayor Fair?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so we can move on to item 4A.
Good evening, Mayor. It's Assistant City Manager Lisa Soger. I'm here to present item 4A, which is the annual adoption of a resolution establishing the fiscal year 2020-2021 fee schedule. Typically, this comes in a public hearing every year, 60 days before it is to take effect. It is planned to take effect on, it is planned to take effect on July 1st, usually of every year. In 2015-2016, the city completed a comprehensive fee study that analyzed the fees. And since that time, most fees are adjusted by the Consumer Price Index every year. We use the February number, and this past February, that number was 3.4%. Additionally, there are a few changes in fees where we've seen things have changed, and we're trying to better cover the costs associated with them. And so you'll note that in the fee study, we have some notes by the things that have changed, and in particularly in the building and safety fees and other permit fees associated with commercial projects. Those fees have been adjusted to better reflect the new requirements for staff review is much more comprehensive than it had been. So those fees have been raised appropriately. And so the first task is to adopt the resolution number 20-18, establishing the fees. The second piece of business that we had asked the council to consider is, and provide some recommendation, is on the planning fees. They are not changed. They are not changed apart from the COLA in the in the fee schedule before you. But it's been about a decade. The planning is the one department where the fees actually don't cover costs at all. They're they're much reduced. And one of the fees that we're bringing forward tonight is the appeal fee, which is set at about $500, set at $500. And we just wanted to point out that it is greatly under the actual cost, which is about $8,000. And in a time where we are grappling with balancing a budget, we're just coming with you with this consideration. That's about all I have unless you have questions. And I know that Bonnie is available to talk more specifically.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Okay, do we have any public speakers?
Yes, we have five public speakers. They are Joe Drummond, Colin Drummond, Christopher Cunningham, John Maza, and Craig Hill. So the first speaker is Joe Drummond.
Hi there. I'd like to ask that city council do not raise the appeal fee from the planning commission to city council any higher than the current $500. To attempt to raise this fee over 1,650% without informing the public via local papers, word of mouth, et cetera, is not good. We have only just heard about this yesterday and the agenda only came out about this on Friday. Anyone aggrieved by a potential build needs to have the right to appeal their case to city council and having costs rise to possibly as high as 8750, 8,750 is not only prohibitive, but not taking care of your citizens who have the right and wish to uphold the city's mission statement. We who sacrifice urban and suburban conveniences in order to protect that environment and lifestyle and to preserve unaltered natural resources and rural characteristics. You would be making appeals available to only the wealthy and those who go against this mission statement. It's usually regular citizens that have to fight wealthy developers. So raising this fee works in the developer's favor. Unless they made a fee for the applicant and then one for anyone else, that they keep that at $500, then that's fine. The planning department is not clear with their codes and rules and need to be called out upon it, the city council. The Malibu municipal codes and the LIP has vague and non-defined planning findings and requirements. The staff reports are already written at the planning commission level and do not require 32 to 50 hours of time of planning staff to bring it to city council. We have a personal situation that involves an upcoming appeal to city council. Because of the lack of clarity on rules and codes, state versus county, et cetera, in city planning, we have to had, we've had to hire a land use attorney to confirm the misapplication of codes in a geologically hazardous area. This is time consuming and costly for us and having anything higher than a $500 appeal fee would have made it very difficult for us to to continue to fight for our rights in a proven dangerous build on a never built upon lot in our landslide district. A perfect example of a high fee that is prohibitive and not being used by Malibu citizens is the view preservation permit fee application when you have an unwilling and cooperative, uncooperative neighbor. Neighbor, this fee is set at 2529 plus once trimming or removal is approved by the planning commission, the neighbors have to pay for this exerting costs as well. I think I'm running out of time. But anyway, that apparently this fee has never been paid. Not one person in Malibu in the four years it's been there has has paid it. And we were actually in a situation where we have a bunch of neighbors who want to bring something like this for an owner, a view owner that a foliage owner that doesn't have that won't agree to make an agreement with us. So we have
About three minutes.
Okay, anyway, please do not raise this fee. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is Colin Drummond.
Yes, hi, I'm on the same line with my wife. I think my wife covered it really well, so I'm not going to use three minutes. I just, I just want you to think about what message it gives to the citizens of Malibu when when they're presented with an opportunity to appeal and they see it's $500. I think that's sending a message. City council is open and willing to hear from people regardless of the level of wealth they have in Malibu. And 8,000, whatever it is, is sending another clear message that I think is inappropriate. So I'll just make the second point that there are normal people who live in Malibu who are billionaires and celebrities. And I think it's incumbent upon us to find a fee that matches that information. So I think we just got to think about what kind of message that sends. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Christopher Cunningham.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor Ferrer and council members for giving me the opportunity to speak. I would, I would like to voice my opposition to the increase in the appeals fee. Without a clear understanding of the rationale for the fee increase, it is hard to determine the need or reason for such a large increase. It seems that the rate proposed at 8750 is so far beyond the people's ability to pay and could give the impression that the city is biased for pro-development rather than being a neutral party. Have there been any benchmarking to understand what other cities charge for such appeals? From what I understand, the work involved in an appeal leverages existing work on the staff report and only focuses on the part of the report that is problematic. So how can this take a person spending over one full time week on the appeal? Again, I oppose the appeal increase. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Maza?
Hi, this is John. Even on screen says Robbie, that's my wife. I sent you an email explaining some of the issues I have with this. First, I'd like to question why you use just February as your inflation index? Since the index normally is is taken over an average of a year. And February is an outlier, which is approximately twice what last year was. Most people use a full year inflation. But back to the issue at hand, in 2011, the city council went through this. They asked staff to get rates in the cities around us and they tended to be lower than we were. So we actually lowered our rate from 1,000 to 500. We haven't done that study this time. And we're in a critical point. I'm on the planning commission. I know that we we now have the Klein decision on wave height for 100 years. We've got view blockage. We've got ADUs. We've got all the houses coming through the pipeline that weren't 110%. Reviews that did not come to the planning commission. We've got view blockage and we've got a lot of other issues. In the case of Drummond, we actually had to send the the staff report back to have interpretation of LA city and county interpretations along with the coastal commission. It's very complicated. So I know the planning commission makes errors and I know there's difference of opinions on the planning commission, but we shouldn't take it out on the public's ability to try to participate in the in the in the process and come out with the right decision. It's it's, as Hamish said, this is a, this is sort of a right to participate. And when you price people out of the ability to participate, you basically are favoring wealthier people and that's not part of the American system. And you're favoring developers over people who have to fight massive assets working against them and consultants and all types of things. So I hope you reconsider. It's not a matter of cost. It's a matter of fairness to the public. And it's a very important issue that you don't get huge amounts of appeals. But when you do, they're important and they affect people's lives. So I hope you reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Craig Hill.
Ready again, just as a quick aside, council member Mullin, twice now you've called me an extremist on the on the COVID issue. And to clarify, I'm just presenting the science. I actually agree with some of what Amy said. And I didn't make a comment about whether we should open the economy, just to point out that it's going to be around a long time and November is going to be a mess. Okay, the issue at hand, I don't always agree with John, but I do agree with Commissioner Maz's comments, particularly his email. And the staff report talking about this $1,000 minimum fee prior to 2011. Well, prior to that, it was a few hundred dollars. And I know that because I appealed an item in 2004. And then the fee was later dropped back down to 500 by a prior council because they recognized that the appeal process is an inherent part of the process of public participation. And that to make the cost prohibitive would be a violation of due process. It should just be part of the city's cost of doing business. The sole justification for having a fee at all is to set a threshold to discourage frivolous appeals and 500 bucks does that. Raising the fee would favor developers over neighbors. And lately I've noticed some alarming cases where the city has favored developers over neighbors and I hope it's not a trend because I think that's the wrong direction for the city to be moving. If the point is that the city is going to be so broke as to not be able to allow for the public to have a fulsome voice in the process, then I would suggest that any such costs of doing business be integrated into the developers permit fees upfront, effectively amortized across all developers, not just the few whose projects end up being appealed. So in closing here, however you vote on this, recognize that you'll be making a direct declaration as to who you really work for. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay.
Mayor Ferrer?
Yes.
May, may I just make two comments to before you deliberate? The first, I would like to clarify the February Consumer Price Index number. That number is a year over year number. It is from February 2019 until February 2020. And so it it factors in one entire year. And the reason the city has always used February is because we are always doing these. It's the, it's the latest available number that we have in March when we are preparing the fee schedule and preparing the budget documents. So it is not a one month snapshot. It is a year evaluation. So that's the first thing. And then the second piece I just want to clarify is the staff report does not recommend changing the fee from $500 to $8,000. That number, that $8,000 number was just to give you the information of what the city's true costs are, should you want to make a change and increase the fee, but in no way was staff recommending that the fee should be set at $8,000. Again, that was for your information. And this is something that is not in the fee schedule. The fee schedule does not address these planning fees. And so the main point of tonight's meeting is to adopt the fee schedule, leaving you to give us staff direction, one way or another, on dealing with planning fees moving forward. And so that that's the end unless anybody has any questions.
Madam Mayor, can I jump in? This is Christie. Okay. Just real quickly, I just wanted to clarify also a couple of things. The first is that the fee is not set at amount to discourage appeals. And the second is that the point of the fee isn't to show favor to one side or another. I guess the third thing is also the fee can't be based just on what other people around us are paying, like in the market. Because unlike a lot of things, how much the fee is is regulated by state law. And the state law says that it can, it has to be the actual cost to the city. That's what the Assistant City Manager is referring to, calculating the actual cost. You can charge less, of course, and not have full recovery. And what that means is that instead, all the taxpayers will be paying that other part that's not being paid by the applicant. And so the idea is that if the applicant or the appellant has a special interest, because it's their neighborhood or it's their project, they have a different investment than the city as a whole. And so the taxpayer money, which is infinite, would be used for other priorities. So it's an offsetting thing to give the applicant or the appellant some of the financial burden that the taxpayers or otherwise going to have to bear when the things that are at issue may only affect a certain portion of the public.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Do we have council comments? I don't see any hands raised.
You have a council member Mullin and council member Peak and Wagner all raising their hands.
Thank you. Okay, who would like to go first? How about Skylar?
Thank you. So I had a question for Lisa, which was approximately, how many appeals do we have per year on average?
Bonnie can probably answer better, but my understanding is it's not that many. It's maybe around 10 to 12.
Yeah, generally it could range from about six to 12. That's, that's a good estimation.
Okay. And then my next question was, did we, do we have any idea what any of the other cities charge around us? And I know, Christie, I'm obviously, I very clearly got what you said.
We, we have not examined that for this year.
Do we have any information from 2011?
I don't have it right with me, but we can get back to you on that.
Councilmember Peak, this is Riva. You know, we didn't spend a lot of time doing any in looking at what other cities are doing or other costs of it. We just brought this forward as an item to bring up for discussion for the council because it's the one fee that hasn't changed in a very long time. You know, we're very sensitive to to why it should, why it's been this amount. But we did just want to bring it forward. And if there's additional information that the council wants about this, we're more than happy to take that guidance and bring this back as part of a further budget discussion. We'll have a public hearing on the budget in June and we could certainly gather information. So if you have things that you'd like us to look for, we could certainly do that.
Thank you. I don't, I don't really feel, I guess, that that's entirely necessary. I would be okay with a slight increase to that fee amount at this time, but definitely the 8750 is not what I'd be, would be in supportive. And I very much understood that the staff was just pointing that out to us, that this is the, this is what it costs. So, you know, you're have a $500 fee and it's costing us almost 9,000 and it hasn't been changed in nearly 10 years, you may want to look at changing it a little bit. So thank you very much to the staff for for pointing that out. And I'll rest and hear what everybody else has to say.
Okay, thank you, Skylar. Jefferson?
Yes, thank you, Karen. For those of you following on paper at home, page 14 of 29, it's item three. Just so you can see it on paper if you need to. What Skylar mentioned was fair and I feel a good assessment of the fee amounts. You're asking for something probably, but not a great increase. And certainly, if if it's $8,000 to process it and we're want to be revenue neutral, we'll never meet that and we could give fairness to everybody in Malibu. But if you came up with something at 10% of what it costs and we were actually to only increase it 100 or 200 bucks, at least we could point that out in the future. But certainly, a great increase like that is something I would in favor. And I don't think a lot of people in town would appreciate that. Thank you, Karen.
Okay, thank you, Jefferson. Rick?
It's important, I appreciate all the speakers coming.
It's important. I appreciate all the speakers coming down. And you're right, it is very important that the common men have an ability to wade into the arena with the moneyed interests and challenge things that go against the mission statement of the city of Malibu. And those are very important points. But you know, a lot of these things that we listen to as appeals are the other side of the coin, which is the developer who's been turned down and he you know, has a lot of money at stake. So there's always two sides of this story. But I'm not at all interested in cranking it up to 8,000 bucks. But you know, it's a little increase. I'm, I agree with with Skylar and Jefferson. It's probably wise to you know, increase it a little bit and still keep it within the realm of the achievable for the common man, who is often the one who's down there giving out his time and energy to preserve the city of Malibu, but nothing over a thousand bucks, I don't think. But I'm interested in what everybody else has to say. And Craig, I didn't call you an extremist. I just said that the two of you represent the two extremes of this of the spectrum on the issue. I think that's true. One is overly cautious. Well, I shouldn't say overly, extremely cautious. And the other one is like, hey, free the people. So you're not extremists. I didn't, don't read that into it. It's but you express yourself as being very cautious and I don't want you to think I mischaracterize. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Rick. Mikey?
Thank you, Mayor. I read every line of the fee schedule for whatever reason, probably because I've been home for a month. So I have that kind of time. And I appreciate all the notes on it and everything made pretty great sense. So I appreciate all the work that went into that. As far as the appeal, I think I'm pretty much on the same page with everyone else here. I would be curious, just because now that it's been raised, I'm curious what the local cog, the other cities charge. I I it'd be interesting to know. I I didn't care before, but now suddenly I'm very curious what our neighbors are charging on an appeal. And for everyone involved, yes, I understand, obviously, $8,000 doesn't make sense the way we operate our city and what we're used to at all. But I'd be willing to talk about a little increase that makes sense at most. And I'm also curious, maybe not for now, just let's, we definitely have time on this, but I'm curious just to hear a recap of the discussion that happened that brought it apparently down to $500 and what that was like. And I can understand why, but and I don't even know what it was beforehand and the implications of that. So I don't know much of the history, but it'd be great to know what neighbors and users are charging if we don't base our decision off it because I don't know, seems to fit in right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mikey. Yeah, I want to make sure the public understands this item. I never understood it to imply that the fee should go from $500 to 8,750. I don't think anybody thinks that's a good idea. It is concerning to know that the city cost is so much more than the current fee. And I think if some of that cost could be recouped, it would be helpful. And I I kind of have a feeling like some of the other council members have said that if this could go up even a few hundred dollars, it would help offset the cost to us. So you know, I think something like 750, something like that, you know, seems like it would help offset our costs and and not make it, number one, a huge jump and not make it a deterrent to appeal. So that I would hope that there's something that's a happy medium that's also not in the medium of those two numbers. So I don't know if we have to make this decision tonight and decide this fee. But I think what we could do is approve the rest of the fee schedule.
Mayor, I believe Skylar's trying to raise his hand.
I didn't see your hand up. Okay, I'll stop there. You go ahead.
I think that in light of what all the council members, Mayor Protem and you've said, Mayor, that I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 20-18 establishing the fiscal year 202021 schedule of fees and in light in direction in regards to the appeals that we increase the fee from $500 to $750 for the 20202021 year.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Oh, Jefferson, I'm sorry, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Karen. Before we work on that motion, I'd like to just give you a little bit of history. I was on the council at the time in 2011 when it was reduced. It was reduced because of a great deal of public outcry. Was felt at the time that the fees were substantially too great for the average guy to participate. So it came down and the 5-0 vote or 4-1 vote. So it was pretty strong that the community wanted a fee that could be afforded by everybody. So I just wanted to throw that little bit of history in for those of you who want to look it back up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Awesome. Madam Mayor, can I just jump in? So we're adopting the resolution and giving direction to staff to bring back the increase to 750 because we hadn't noticed for that. But that's good direction that what we were looking for.
Yeah, I think that's the motion. Okay, so thank you, Christie. We have a motion and a second. And Heather, will you do a roll call?
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Ferrer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Kelsey. Okay, we will move on to item.
Yeah.
Do we have a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, mayors and council, Mayor Ferrer and council. I have a brief presentation for you tonight. We are requesting direction on a proposed development agreement for a hotel project proposed by Mr. Norm Haney. I will be providing a brief overview of the project. And Mr. Haney is also here, I believe, to speak on the item. First, I want to be very clear that the project itself is not before you tonight. We have not presented a staff report with all of the information you would need in order to approve the project or to make findings. And while the applicant has provided some materials, these are not in a form for adoption or approval at this time. And more importantly, the city has not yet conducted environmental review of the proposed project, and that information must be taken into consideration before you reach any decision about whether you support the project. Because the development agreement process involves extensive staff time, tonight we are asking for direction from the council on whether to engage in negotiations for the project. And if so, what public benefits the council is interested in. It should be noted that even if the council directs staff to move forward, it is not obligated to later approve the development agreement for the project. Next slide, please. There we go. A development uh, okay. There we go. Development agreement creates a statutory vesting for a period of time in exchange for public benefits. Chapter 17.64 of the municipal code lays out the procedure for the development agreement and calls for the applicant to provide special benefits that might not otherwise be provided in the absence of a development agreement. The development agreement would lock in the vested right to develop an exchange for public benefit. Vested rights means that a project may build as approved regardless of changes in the zoning law. The project entitlements, such as a coastal development permit or any amendments to the code or anything like that, would still have to be processed. Next slide. The project this project involves an increase in floor area ratio. That's the ratio of building square footage to lot area greater than the 0.15 or 15% than the code is, than the code allows. I'll talk in more detail about that in a minute. The general plan, the municipal code and local coastal programs say that increased commercial square footage can be authorized by the council in exchange for public benefits. The general plan speaks about what public benefits would constitute, and it mentions physical improvements dedicated and reserved for public use, such as open space, wetlands, trails, walkways, parks, FX, excuse me, athletic fields, civic and public buildings and things like that. It states that the public benefit or amenities shall warrant the burdens of the development intensity bonus over zoning maximum, subject to review and approval by the city. Next slide, please. So this is the project site. The project site is located adjacent to McDonald's in one of the city's busiest commercial and visitor serving areas. Next slide. The project involves two lots that are owned by the applicant. One is the gas station lot that fronts on Pacific Coast Highway and is currently used as a car wash under a conditional use permit that was approved by the planning commission. And the rear lot is currently developed with an office building. And it was developed prior to the current zoning code, so it's legal monitoring. Next slide. So the proposed project, the site involves some challenges, given its current circumstances. First, the zoning, also the existing building and the fact that it involves two lots. The site is zoned currently both parcels, community, commercial and a hotel use would require a change to commercial visitor serving two or CB2. There would be a change of use to a 36 room hotel with a restaurant. There would be a lot merger. The existing office building would be remodeled and the new building that would be part of the hotel would be built on the front lot. Next slide. And due to some of the challenges with the property, an overlay is what is being considered that would involve reduced open space and landscaping, special setbacks, construction on slopes, special parking rules. And as we mentioned earlier, an increase in the floor area ratio based on the current plans, it looks like 0.52, which would involve also code amendments and including an amendment to the general plan. Next slide, please. At this point, the applicant has proposed a public benefit of $400,000 cash to be used for constructing soccer fields or solar panels at City Hall. And the applicant has also provided other information on positive aspects that are expected to arise out of the project, such as transient occupancy tax. But these are not the same as the public benefits that are described or contemplated in the code currently. So the question before the council is whether the applicant is offering public benefits that are substantial enough to justify the vested rights and hotel with a 0.52 FAR development intensity. The applicant is here with a presentation and can provide additional information on the public benefits being offered. Next slide, please. So what staff is asking for is direction from the council about whether to pursue negotiations for a development agreement. And if so, what input you'd like to provide on public benefits. Again, tonight, you're not approving the project or promising to approve the project or the development agreement. Staff is available for questions and is the city attorney. Thank you.
And let me just emphasize something. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, may I, Christie? Let me just emphasize something that the you're not really being asked to decide on what the public benefit should be either. That we can negotiate. It's a much more general push we're looking for. So the question is the staff reaction certainly was to the, to what's being proposed is that that didn't seem like a sufficient public benefit to warrant the what the benefits of a development agreement. And so we're bringing it to you. Maybe we're wrong about that. Maybe we're right. If we are right about that, we'd like to hear from you that that's, you know, that you'd be willing to consider a development agreement, but there would have to be, you know, more or benefit or not that benefit or that kind of thing. And then generally, if you have some ideas, we don't have to nail it down tonight, and this isn't really a good forum to do that in. But whether or not cash, which is an increasingly popular public benefit for cities because it is so versatile, whether cash is something that you would consider as a benefit or whether you wanted something more concrete, like a trail or dedication of land or something else as well. So just those parameters.
Okay, thank you, Christie. Okay. I know we have public speakers.
Yes, we have three public speakers. They are Norman Haney, Craig Hill and Hamish Patterson. So the first is Norm Haney.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, well, before I start, I'd like to ask for an additional three minutes, if it's possible. I mean, it's my project. I worked on it for four years. And I think there's important things to be said.
That's entirely up to the council, Madam Mayor, if you, I mean, so.
Members, do we have any comments on that request?
I don't have a problem with that.
I don't either.
Okay.
All right, so.
I think Jefferson has his hand up to speak.
Oh, I was only going to confirm what I just heard that I have no problem with the extra. Norm could have probably brought people with him and done that thing, but I think in the in the situation that we're in with all of this, an extra couple of minutes isn't going to irritate anybody. Thank you.
Okay, so let's, thank you, Jefferson. So let's set the clock at six minutes.
Norm, you have six minutes on the timer.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity, and I appreciate the additional time. Good evening, Mayor Ferrer and fellow council members. I'd like to first thank Riva and Bonnie for getting this up on the agenda tonight. I started this project four years ago. I filed the application for the zone change over three years ago. And just under three years ago, I filed for the for the actual hotel. The first thing I'd like to emphasize is that this project is very unique. There's a lot of reasons why it is unique and why, if it's approved, it will not set precedent for other projects. First of all, the project provides for transient occupancy payments. And they're not small payments. We're talking $85,000 a month. Over the course of a year, we're looking at roughly $1 million plus the additional increase from the property taxes that will clearly go up. Second, a hotel and motel is a different kind of use than your average commercial use. The city has never approved a hotel or a motel in almost 30 years since its inception. That does make it unique. Third, and this is really important, the mass majority of the increase in floor area that I'm requesting is already approved and permitted by the city of Malibu and by the California Coastal Commission. It's in the existing building that I'm in right now. And we're only asking for a interior remodel of that building. That is incredibly unique. I mean, if you calculated, let's say it's not approved, then I would apply for an application for the Shell gas station property. And I would have a right to roughly 15%. What I'm asking for in addition to that 15% is 7,000 square feet. So for 7,000 square feet of additional square footage, fifteen percent is seven thousand square feet. So for seven thousand square feet of additional square footage, I end up with a with a good hotel that that actually is economically viable. Another reason why it's unique is because hotels and motels require a certain amount of rooms. And those rooms require additional floor area ratio. That's one of the reasons why hotels and motels have not been approved. They can't compete with other commercial uses that can find a way to build a shopping center with fifteen percent or with twenty percent. That may be one of the reasons why instead of a hotel, the city ended up with a cemetery, which doesn't pay any transfer occupancy tax. Finally, if you want to compare apples to apples and you look at the only other hotel in the entire city, which is the Malibu Beach Inn. If you look at its floor area ratio, it's one hundred and seven percent. What would be required for the hotel I'm proposing is fifty one point eight or fifty two percent. It looks like they rounded it off here. Half, less than half of what another hotel has already got. Now, the city didn't approve that hotel. But it's an indication of what's necessary to make a hotel economically viable. And that's one of the reasons why you don't have any hotels here, except that one. And you've got five motels that were actually approved and constructed over sixty years ago. Three of them have been remodeled, but the original approval was then. The last thing that makes this incredibly unique is that this project actually reduces traffic on Pacific Coast Highway. If you consider the amount of traffic that's being generated by the existing building, for- forget the Shell gas station for the moment because that's what the accredited traffic engineer did that was recommended by Bob Brigger. He did the analysis on a thirty six room hotel versus the traffics being generated on PCH by the existing building. And the hotel will reduce traffic by twenty to forty percent depending on the day and the time of day. That's incredible. Likely the only project that will ever be approved in Malibu that reduces traffic on PCH. So basically, I'm looking for the approval of seven thousand square feet. If if you were to look at, let's say the La Paz project. La Paz project provided the city with two and a half acres and five hundred thousand dollars. Basically, roughly in the neighborhood of three million dollars. What did they get for it? They got twenty eight thousand square feet of additional floor area. And I'm looking for seven thousand. So for roughly three thousand dollars, they were able to make a deal. And.
Norm, you just hit six minutes.
Wow. I'll finish up real quick. I do have some renderings, seven, that you may want to see. And yeah, okay. If somebody wants to ask me questions, I'm here and available to answer.
The next speaker is Craig Hill.
Hi again, Hatrick here. There's several people pointed out that one of the addresses is wrong in the staff report. It seems like that's defective noticing. So technically, maybe this should be continued. In any case, seventy two hours isn't long enough for the public to read the materials, one hundred and eighty pages and form a comment and for you to read that. So it seems like moving ahead would be a deprivation of due process. Nonetheless, in the abstract, it makes sense to have a hotel here. It's already developed visitor serving area. And the TOT would help wean the city off its growing addiction to STR TOT. In my letter to you, I disclosed that Mr. Haney has given me a tour of the project and sought my advice on a few aspects. We've discussed its many virtues. But in all that discussion, there's never been any mention of FAR. I should have thought to ask, but certainly Mr. Haney should have been more forthcoming in pointing out this herd of metaphorical elephants lounging around the rooms of his hotel. The existing point three eight FAR is already two and a half times greater than the current allowance. He's asking for point five two. There's no legal mechanism by which it can be increased further. The legal concept of development intensity bonus in the staff report is actually applicable only to affordable housing, not a commercial hotel. That's clear in the language of the general plan as it refers to the details in the LIP section seven point four point one. So if you could find your way past that via another legal mechanism, and I think there is one, it's just not the DIB. It still doesn't appear that the proposed terms for the agreement are close enough for the city to consider a negotiation yet. There may be potential public impacts not yet even contemplated. And on top of those, what about the cost of establishing a precedent that could produce impacts by future projects elsewhere in the city? Then to account for those impacts over a nominal thirty year span over which the four hundred thousand dollars offered would pencil out at a little over a thousand dollars a month. Imagine this business grossing almost eight hundred thousand dollars per month as suggested. Could it really be causing only a thousand dollars a month worth of public burden? I mean, maybe, but further, it seems that the four hundred K number is arbitrary, sort of a magic number drawn from a hat like it's what Wine Tribe paid to convert the Wind Sale Restaurant and what Ellison paid to the state in mitigation for his carbon residents. So it doesn't look like the parties are yet close enough to be negotiating an agreement. You need to see a project that's at least close to the existing FAR with an evaluation of potential impact impacts, sort of like a pre EIR in a sense. And likely a bigger dollar amount earmarked specifically for something of ongoing benefit because we're talking about long term here, thirty years. So maybe the soccer fields and the solar panels proposed, those are both ongoing. But definitely not something just dumped into the general fund.
Craig, your time is up.
All right, thank you. That was about it anyway.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Hamish Patterson and he will be followed by Paul Grisanti.
Hi. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. As I fully respect Norm, I think Norm has nothing but the the well being of Malibu in his heart. I as just, this is kind of outrageous how this is going down. I I I heard about this really for the first time at the last virtual meeting. Right now, we have seventeen people watching. There's three public comments. And we're talking about, I mean, just on the superficial level, like a four hundred thousand dollar low bid. And that that's it. That's all the city's going to get out of it. And we're not talking about one of the if you want to go on Google Maps, it's red there all the time. The development across the street, the the Nobu has been nothing but a traffic fiasco with with its valet parking and how that situation's run. So so saying it reduces traffic, maybe, maybe not, but this occurring right now in any sort of negotiation taking place under the cover of this pandemic COVID thing is is outrageous. And and I can't believe that that's even on the agenda and there's nobody here to speak up for it. I I'm offended by this and I think that a lot of people in Malibu would be offended by this. And I'm not saying that anything about the validity of this project being good. I I think Norm's a good dude and his project's probably good. But this occurring at this time and space is inappropriate and and I do find it offensive. And I and I and I think, Norm, that that this isn't right. And I get that you've been working on it a long time, but no way should the city be getting into any sort of negotiation. I would say that, yeah, bring a public presentation and do this when the public can show up and there's properly proper notification. Craig's right, seventy two hours to 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 digest this is that's not right. And and this is a major development right in one of the most congested areas of Malibu. This this is, this is a travesty and an injustice. And this is what I'm talking about. Where you guys were not getting our constitutional due rights if this is going down when we're all stuck at home and we can't, I we can't even go tour the look at the project right now. This is not cool. And and I am absolutely appalled that this is on the agenda item right now, something as big as this. And I'm actually offended by the four hundred thousand dollar lowball. That that's not right. Anyway, I I'm done being outraged. Like that, that's, this isn't right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Paul Grisanti.
Thank you very much. Used to be here and and speaking tonight. I am one of the people who also, like Craig, walked through the project and I I think that the brilliance of this whole thing is that the building, nearly all of the square footage already exists and it's there legally, extremely well built. And remodeling it isn't going to add anything. And I would advise Hamish, so what what you're talking about or will be talking about is deciding whether to negotiate a development agreement. And deciding to go down the path of negotiating a development agreement. There's no conclusion being implied by what you people are being asked to do today. And I think that it makes way too much sense. It'll generate way too much transient occupancy tax and it would serve well to wean us off the short term rentals in residential neighborhoods. So I think it deserves a strong good luck. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I just jump in one more time? Sorry about that. I just want to emphasize this point, which is that, you know, Norm owns this property. He's got a plan for the property. He has a right to make applications. He's going to make an application. It's going to have a hearing in front of the planning commission and it may get approved or may get denied. And if there's legislative parts, it'll come to you and it's that part, we're not deciding that. We're not looking at the project. It doesn't even come to that point as Ms. Blue said earlier, we don't have any environmental review. So who knows what we're talking about? The what's before you is just whether or not it's worth, you think it's worth having staff go out and discuss public benefits in exchange for vesting that and if you say yes, we'll go out, we'll do our best. And then whatever we do is going to go to the planning commission and there's going to be a public hearing on that. And the planning commissioner will weigh in and then it'll come to you and there'll be another public hearing and you'll make a decision. So there's no project, there's no, it's just a question of whether or not we, you want us to allocate resources in that to that discussion. And I think, you know, again, you you should let us know what the bar, if you want us to, what the bar is because you know, we tend to agree with the speakers that four hundred thousand is not, doesn't make sense, given the parameter of the project.
Okay, thank you, Christie. Okay, council members, who I assume we have comments, who would like to begin? I see any hands up. Is that Rick? Jefferson? Okay, how about Rick first and then Jefferson?
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you to the speakers. Just a couple of comments about that. Hamish, we're not, as as the city attorney said, we're not actually deciding on, it's got a long way to go before it gets decided upon. We hear you. And I don't think anyone's trying to do anything under the cover of COVID at all. In fact, we're going to great lengths to not have things where we know there's going to be a lot of public interest and public speakers. In this project, I think eventually, if it ever got to that point, would have a lot of speakers. And there'll be plenty of opportunity should the ball start rolling tonight. So I just want to at least address those comments. Question for the city attorney, how flexible are the negotiations in terms of, let's say tonight, we give you some direction that says, hey, yeah, he lowballed us with the four hundred thousand. Do we have to give you some specifics on what you should be looking for? Or can we leave it relatively gray to come out with something? And also, do do you report back to us along the negotiation route? You know, like when the city is buying a property and that type of thing. So if you could answer that and then I'll have a couple more comments.
Okay, um, thank you. The it is not this exactly the same as when we're buying a property because it would, it's going to come to you ultimately in the form of a public hearing. And so it it you could be pretty vague. Where I'm kind of more interested in is a cash payment, something you'd consider, or does it need to be some other benefit that that they construct or or buy for us or something? That's kind of one of the issues I'm most interested in. And then what level? Then, you know, we'll just, we'll do our best to look at the project, how it gets valued. It's way early to be negotiating that exactly because we really need the project except, I know Mr. Haney feels like he's got a fully developed project, but staff doesn't. And so still we have a real idea of what is going on there. Then we'll have a better idea. There may be something that comes out of the environmental review that informs what would be a great public benefit to add. We don't know. So you could be vague, but let me know if it's if cash is enough.
Yeah, and one other question about that is one of the positives for the city that has been touted about this all along and even this evening was the TOT revenue. And is that something that can be worked in a negotiation? Not necessarily because it doesn't fall under necessarily the the public benefit thing, but hey, if you're coming to us saying, oh, it's going to generate a million dollars a year. Okay, can we have that in writing? In other words, can we ask that it be a guaranteed X amount per year with some, you know, accommodations for future COVID crises or Woolsey or whatever.
The TOT is what it is. So if anytime you approve a hotel, you're going to get transient occupancy tax and we have a tax. But yes, we could certainly look at a kind of profit sharing or a guaranteed amount if the TOT doesn't make a certain amount as part of a structure of an agreement going forward for a few years after occupancy. Sure.
Okay, thanks. Those are the questions that I wanted you to comment on and I'm interested in what my fellow council members have to say.
Okay, thank you, Rick. I think Jefferson was next.
Yes, Karen, thank you very much. I have visited the properties several times. And I looked at the little rendering that Norm had put out with the concept and all the amenities that would be furnished to the people that were staying there. I also did a little background in on my own. Like to just mention that the water pressure system on PCH there is really low. We found out during the Woolsey event that we had a compromise from District Twenty Nine on a number of occasions with water pressures going up to tanks. And I believe during the La Paz project, not only were we promised a right hand turn lane for La Paz in the property that was not La Paz's property, which is now the Shell Station, but that never happened. As well as the increased water that was necessary to bring the La Paz project forward. I think Norm may be able to explain it better than I do, but there was a deficiency in District Twenty Nine's valving for water pressure increases during an event like the Woolsey. I don't know the details, but I know the valve is down at Topanga. And I think that's money that's coming out of Norm's prof- pocket that benefits the community water pressure wise. That is one of the amenities that I think is on in furnished, but I don't know for sure. Maybe Norm could address that if somebody wants to ask Norm up. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Jefferson. Mikey, oh, Skylar. Skylar, go ahead. Sorry, Mikey. Didn't see you.
Oh, I had a a question for staff that's in regards to what was listed in parentheses as a G C, a general maybe plan amendment or something that would be needed to approve something like this. Would this project just receive a variance or would we actually have to fully amend the code to allow something like this?
Right now, the general plan allows for the standard sort of regular floor area ratio for community or CB two is point one five. Public benefits can get you up to point two five. The the FAR for this project would exceed that. So what we've discussed is creating an overlay district that would amend a variety of standards to deal with. a variety of standards to deal with some of the special circumstances on this property. And we could also address that maximum in the general plan at that time.
And to be clear, that overlay district would only apply to these two parcels, correct?
That's right.
So my next like question that sort of goes along those lines is that needed? If you were to even, let's say we said, well, okay, we don't want to allow the large increase, but we will allow the C V G zoning on, with the existing size or maybe a little bit less of a size. Is that still required?
I think it revolves around the, if, if the existing building were used and remodeled and there was no need to involve the second property, I think that changes circumstances a lot. So there may not, you may not need to address the F A R if the properties weren't merged and you weren't doing a, a whole new development involving both parcels.
And I don't know, Bonnie, if you answer this or maybe Norm has to answer it, but.
Just add that caveat that I want to look at that closely. I, I, I think that's the case, but we would need to look at that.
Okay. The bulk of the additional square footage, that would be added essentially to the lower parcel to sort of have its stair step up the hill. Is that correct?
The, yes, then the lower parcel would be developed with another building.
But the, the larger increase that would basically mostly be on a lower parcel is, or is it split? I just didn't entirely, I couldn't really decipher it from like the rendering that I saw.
Yeah. So is your question really, is most of the square footage going to be on the upper parcel versus the lower parcel?
No, I think that most of the new square footage would be on the lower parcel.
Yes.
Okay. All right. I don't have a, a problem with money being the public amenity. And I don't have a problem with it going to the general fund or being put towards athletic fields and parks, like park improvements maybe would be the way that I would think it should be categorized if it was, if the council wanted that. Or maybe a split between some general fund and some to go for parks. So I would lead with, with that direction, but that I'm a little bit uncomfortable on the size. And I know that although that size kind of seems with a drawing that looks like it would work there, I think that the council is, is going down a, an interesting road with that. But I think it also, it would be important for us to, to look at the, I know there's a little bit of analysis in there that's of some of the properties that are around the subject parcel. But I would not want to see that as like a precedent for anyone with an office building to come in and say, okay, hey, I want to do a hotel now and you got to give me a, you know, a point five F A R. I think that would be a, an awkward message to send, I guess. I don't know how everybody else feels on that, like about that, but I, I think that would be something to take up. And then also in regards to the, the comments about the traffic going down. I don't entirely buy that. Just because it seems like we've had a lot of traffic, for example, at the Malibu Beach Inn, even since that's been remodeled and they have challenges with parking there. So I think that I would ask that the council or if you guys move forward with it to figure out, you have a real tight, you know, parking valet, get cars off the highway thing real quick, plan in place.
So is that it? Thank you. Okay, Mikey?
Thank you, Mayor. I have been to the site, explored it a couple of times as a planning commissioner. Met with Norm and walked it. I, I know we're not deciding on the project, but I do think it's an interesting project mainly because it has, it does have a few neat, unique characteristics. A lot of it's built, which is unique. For the intended use, it has parking, even if it doesn't fit our code. Our codes are honestly a little ridiculous on hotel parking. It's not reality with how people park at hotels, but that's another subject for another time. And even on the F A R issues, since it's largely built out or it's a blight, it, it doesn't really, that part doesn't bother me. The interesting part we're deciding tonight would be the public benefit of which I have zero experience, any council dealing with. I, um, I'll be honest, I don't, I don't actually know the answer there. I sort of, I could see why cash is interesting. I kind of like what Skylar said about some of the other. We're, we're, we're constantly, anytime anything comes up, we're talking about place for people to recreate. So I could see why Skylar brought up, whether it's a park or, or whatever it is, that, that kind of direction makes sense to me as well. I do want to clarify what I think Norm meant on the parking was not that it lessened parking on Pacific Coast Highway. It lessened parking in that particular use to what it is now. He wasn't saying when lower parking over it, no, I won't do that. So I, 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 I think it'd be very interesting to look for a development deal that's a win-win for everybody. I do see some of the benefits of the hotel. And I never, I gotta be honest, in the eight plus years I've been working at the city as a planning commissioner, public works commissioner, and now city council, I never would dream I would see a hotel project that I thought, hmm, that, that looks pretty interesting. But this one mainly because it's just a unicorn in a way, is interesting and it's as much of it's already built and it's not like it's empty dirt that's coming along wanting point five F A R. Cause I agree, I don't see how that could ever happen, ever. So anyhow, not really detail on how to negotiate a development agreement, but I do think it's worth exploring. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mikey. Uh, I will address one thing that Skylar said about the project would need valet. I think that's built into the plan. I also had a site visit, I don't know, sometime before the state home orders began. And I agree with Mikey, you know, it's an existing building for the most part. I realize the gas station, part of it would be the majority of the new building. That gas station is, you know, obviously hasn't been a gas station for many, many years or the mechanic or anything that was there with it. And that's, you know, that's not a, that's, it, I agree with Norm. It's a blight right in the middle of, the middle of town. But Skylar, to answer one of your concerns, I, my understanding is that valet parking is built into the project for, for everybody arriving. So that's.
I understood that. I just would, I was just that I, you know, you want the surety in that plan that we're not in a situation where cars could potentially back up on the highway. That's what I was getting at. I was very well aware that valets would be.
Like on the other side of the street? Yeah. I totally agree with that. That's not been a good thing. I'm with Mikey on, I'm not sure what can be negotiated regarding the benefits to the city. But I, I think what's before us tonight with directing the staff and the city attorney to negotiate a development agreement to allow for an overlay district is something that I think is not a bad idea. And, and again, to repeat what's been said a couple of times already tonight, this is not a vote to approve a hotel project. So, um, you know, I, I think I, yeah, Skylar, go ahead. I'm, I'm comfortable moving ahead with asking, directing staff to negotiate an overlay district.
I know that obviously the whole entire thing's not in front of us tonight, but essentially we are giving the go-ahead to say, you know, explore something here and see what we come back with. I also very much heard the comment from Hamish about public input and whatnot. That's regards to a project like this that I think many would actually definitely see as being a, a, a large substantial project in our city. So, um, I would like to maybe put forth that maybe staff can negotiate a little bit of a development agreement, but that we have this back to council when we go back to having public meetings so that we can receive any of the additional input about that with the direction that the, that the cash is okay. It would obviously, I think everybody's saying that it should be increased substantially in some form. So I don't know, Christie, if that's something that's fair to do or not, but that's.
Yeah. The, the hearings are essential and it's going to be a very public process and there's going to be environmental review. It's going to take a while. The most orderly way to do this is to let it go to the planning commission first and get the planning commission to vet it and that helps inform the public and it narrows the issues and then it'll come to you after it's been to the planning commission. This is not on a fast track though. This will be, you know, after it fully develops and we'll, we'll make sure that there's plenty of opportunity for public input.
Okay. So.
So did.
A motion.
Yeah. So my, my motion is to sort of allow the staff and city attorney to negotiate a development agreement that allows for the overlay zone with up to a point five two F A R. And that the public benefit is okay if it's cash, it needs to be more substantial.
And, and noting that there needs to be robust public hearings on the project.
Yes, absolutely. And the, the one comment that was made about the guarantee of the TOT talks, I think that that would be something that would be very much difficult. And in the event that, let's say we had like a downturn in that, then we'd be subject to be going after a business owner who has a struggling business. And I think that that would be very difficult to get those things in place. So I would kind of veer away from that and get something more substantial upfront and know. Is.
I hear you.
That's my motion.
I just agree with that in terms of the TOT thing because you're talking about a one-time payment and then you're talking about a long payment every year. So I would love to see that.
You're still going to get the TOT revenue every year or on a monthly quarterly basis. That's still going to be remitted on a quarterly basis. I just think that you couldn't ask for, let's say you are going to ask for a guaranteed, you know, TOT tax payable at like a 75 or 85% occupancy. I don't know that a hotelier would ever agree to that.
Well, if you're touting it as one of the major benefits to the city for a, a project that you're asking for a lot and you say that, hey, it's one of the major benefits. I think there's a, I'd like to see the, that the city hold their feet to the fire and say, okay, you say there's going to be a benefit? Good. Sign here.
Then if, if you did that, then I would suggest that you go for something based on like a 50% occupancy or something because you want the biggestest to succeed.
Yeah, I'm not saying that it has to be that. I'm just, I think that that's probably something that should, could be considered in the discussion without being too restrictive to the negotiator, but it's something that, that's, that's really the long-term benefit to the city, really. Whatever the little gifting for the recreational stuff that gets done upfront, unless it's land, it's going to be gone pretty quick. So that other TOT is something that, it's like the golden goose, you know? Let's make sure that there's a golden egg that comes out of it every month, every year. Excuse me.
All right. I feel like you've given me lots to work with.
Okay. Jefferson, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Karen. Last comment. Also wanted to just mention that infrastructure increased values to the city are something that could be mentioned as part of something that the proponent could work on as part of his pricing of his rooms. If he did get the project through and he had 36 rooms and he had to price it competitively, the TOT arrives anywhere, but if he's willing to put money into the infrastructure, even if it isn't parks or into the general fund, like the water main fix, those are things that I think we could negotiate for a better posturing for the development of the project. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Jefferson. Yeah, that's a good point.
Those things could also be required by the water department or the fire department, even to put it forward. So that might be just a condition of approval out the gate.
Okay. So Christie, may I ask you to pick up where you left off?
I think, yes, I think Jefferson had his hand up though.
Oh, again?
Remember Wagner, I'm sorry.
Sorry, back here again. I did have my hand up. So infrastructure value, something may be required, as Skylar mentioned, by the fire department or by the water department. Those are things that if the project didn't go forward, we wouldn't receive. So we'd be living at the same value of water pressure on PCH from District 29. If the project is not approved finally, that valve should be something that we could garner at Topanga. They'll be valuable for the entire community. So those are details that we need to address further on, but it's something I think that if we didn't have the hotel, we wouldn't get that increased water pressure. Thank you.
So the motion on the floor from Councilor Peak is to direct or allow staff to go forward with the negotiations informed by the council's discussion tonight. And with the understanding that there'll be robust public hearings on this as the, it comes forward. I think we just need a second.
Seconds.
Now we got one.
Motion and a second. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Peak?
Yes. With the caveat that the robust discussions happen when we go back to public meetings, not just on Zoom.
And Councilmember Mullin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Fair?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay. All right. And we are moving on to item seven A, the final item. And this is my item. We have three assembly bills that my request is to authorize letters of support for assembly bills number A B 2436, which would help consumers comply with applicable building codes in place after a major property loss. A B 3074, which would, would require the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, CAL FIRE, to update its guidance on or before January 1st, 2023, to include creation of an ember resistant zone within five feet of a structure. And A B 2367, which would create the wildfire resilience task force to establish minimum standards for fire hardened homes and communities. And I just think with what we've been through and with the conditions, particularly for us here in Malibu, east of Malibu Canyon, which hasn't burned since 1993, I think we really need every tool that we can possibly assemble to be better prepared. And that's what these assembly bills can help us do. Skylar and then Rick.
I'm going to make a motion to support them and thank you for bringing them forward.
And I'm going to second that and thank you very much, Mayor, for bringing this forward. I think it's great. There are, why don't I say that there are some, you know, I got a letter of concern that the specifics aren't in there yet. It's, it's jello. It's all going to be crystallized as it moves forward through the legislature and that they craft it. So it's up to us to keep our eye on it as it goes forward. I think it's great and thank you very much for bringing it forward.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Jefferson?
Thank you for bringing it forward, Karen. I think it's valuable. The email that I received from Judy Villa Blanco mentioned some of the potential deficiencies, which I think we reaches out to the senator or the assembly member to clean that up that it's just a couple of sentences. to clean that up, that, uh, it's just a couple of sentences here and there that can be fixed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, um, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Heather or Kelsey, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Fair?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, that was our final item. Did I miss something? No. Okay, it is 8:45 PM and the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Good evening.